Thank you. Happy New Year and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on this January 9, 2024. We call meeting to order at 6:01 PM. In attendance, we have all but trustee Kerfond. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six zero. Next, if we have any comments from the public on any of our closed session items?
Setting thirty seconds on the clock.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comment by phone at this time.
Thank you. So we then turn to closed session and we will be back to report out and back in public at 7 PM. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy New Year and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees this January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four as we reconvene back in open session at seven P. M. If I can ask Vice President Carrillo to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may I invite Senor Lazo to come and share with us a little bit about our community engagement information.
Good evening. If you wish to address the board, call five five nine two seven six three one five zero or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número cinco cinco nueve dos siete seis treinta y uno cincuenta o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntalo al secretario de la mesa directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call five five nine two seven four four seven zero zero extension one zero one five zero by noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la mesa directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al cinco cinco nueve dos siete cuatro cuatro siete cero cero extensión uno cero uno cinco cero el viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía o por lo menos cuarenta y ocho horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Gracias. Next to report out our items from closed session on item E one, we had a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Carrillo. Item passed seven zero and then item E two, we had a motion by trustee Carrillo, second by trustee Cervantes, and item passed seven zero. Next, we move on to our presentations. Dr. Boatwright with our school activities presentations.
Yes, thank you so much. So we're going to start off tonight with Aiden Lee. He is from Justin Garza High School.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, Board of Trustees, and Community. My name is Aiden Lee and I am the Associated Student Body Treasurer at Justin Garza High School. I'm happy to share with you our recent events and experiences we've had so far this academic year. On October thirteenth, we held our annual Fright Night event. This year, it was open to the Central Unified Community and we had a tremendous turnout. Central Unified students and families dressed up in fun costumes and participated in our various activities. Our Fright Night consisted of food trucks, carnival games, inflatables, and more, all for our community to enjoy. October twentieth was our annual Fall Fest football game. This year marks the end of Fall Fest as we transition into our first homecoming game next year. We are excited to welcome back our first graduating class. On December second, we ended our semester with winter formal. Our campus mall was completely transformed into a beautiful set with draping, colorful lighting, and a stage. This was a great way for students to finish off their semester before leaving for winter break. Over winter break, members of our band program secured several spots on the Fresno Madera County Music Educators Association's honor band. This is an incredible honor and opportunity for our guardians and we're proud to say that we had five students in total recognized. To kick off two thousand and twenty-four, our mock child team participated in a competition which included teams from Fresno Unified and Clovis Unified. Their hard work and dedication came to fruition with a first-place trophy. In closing, we welcomed back our students and staff with a wild day. Everyone enjoyed watching the staffer-student volleyball game and many participated in activities throughout campus. This was a fresh start to a great semester. Thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, Aiden.
Okay, and next up, we have Dayami Cortez Rincon from Class. We'll have her come on up. She's the student body president.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and governing board members. My name is Dayami Cortez and I am currently a tenth-grade student attending Class. I stand before you to express the remarkable institution that is Class. It's not just a school. It's a haven of personalized education, a sanctuary for growth and success. At Class, the commitment to one-on-one personalized learning sets it apart. Here, every student is recognized as an individual with unique needs and aspirations. The extraordinary teachers marked by expectational care and patience guide students toward success, offering unwavering support in every encounter. In this educational oasis, teachers are not just mentors. They're allies in the journey of learning. Their availability for students extends beyond the classroom, creating an atmosphere of continuous support and guidance. At Class, education is not a transaction. It's a relationship fostering trust and understanding. For those who have faced the challenges of mental health, this school stands as a beacon of support. The teachers here go above and beyond forming trustworthy relationships that become a cornerstone for overcoming obstacles. From personal experience, I can attest that Class offers the kind of support that transcends the academic realm and is a community that cares about the well-being of each individual. This school may not have sports or extracurricular activities, but what it does provide is a sense of community. It's a place that imparts lessons beyond textbooks, lessons of openness, trustworthiness, patience, and kindness. In this unique learning environment, the staff embraces the diversity of students and their individual situations. They delve in understanding us at our core, navigating the complexities of our lives with an unwavering commitment. Unlike other schools, they don't give up on us. Instead, they tirelessly strive to bring out our inner strengths, teaching us that we are capable and surrounded by a substantial support team ready to cheer us on in every step of the way. In essence, Class is not just an educational institution. It's a sanctuary that teaches resilience, self-belief, and the power of a united support system. Class is a place where students don't just succeed academically. They thrive as individuals nurtured by a team of educators who genuinely care. Thank you.
Thank you, Dayami. Next, we move on to our employee recognitions. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh. Today, this evening, I'd like to introduce our new area administrator overseeing the area of Central East High School, Class, Rio Vista, Central Elementary, Harvest Elementary, Hernan Barstow, and Liddell Elementary, Kristin Rizberg. Ms. Rizberg is a passionate and accomplished educator whose career started in Southern California and has been marked by a variety of roles including elementary and middle school teacher, coordinator, instructional coach, assistant principal, and principal at all levels, and a district coordinator of MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports. Her academic credentials are equally impressive, holding both a master's and a doctorate in educational leadership which underpin her comprehensive understanding of educational systems and strategies. Please welcome Ms. Kristin Rizberg to Central Unified School District. Thank you.
Next, for our alumni recognition, Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh. This recipient today unfortunately is unable to be here with us tonight, but I hope that him and his family are able to watch on our live stream. This week's honoree is a graduate of Central Union High School, the class of 1955, Mr. Columbus Craig. A few words about Mr. Craig. After graduating from Central Union High School, he attended Fresno State College, where he was a member of the track and baseball team. Mr. Craig worked in K-12 education for over 35 years as a coach, a teacher, an administrator at both Edison High School and Washington Union High School. He retired at Washington Union, serving there as the principal. Additionally, Mr. Craig served as the referee for countless high school and junior college football and baseball games throughout the state of California. This work continued for over 40 years. He is a proud lifetime member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, one of the oldest fraternities for African-Americans. Thank you, Mr. Columbus, for your continued service to our community and the commitment to our youth. Let's give Mr. Craig a round of applause and we'll be sure to issue him his plaque at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Collegian. Next, we move on to our employee association highlights. Can I invite up Central Unified Teachers Association President Laura Bolton?
Okay, welcome back. Happy New Year. I have a few things to report out, some positive things going on around the district with our certificated staff. Right now, our teachers are working very hard on report cards and getting ready for award ceremonies. Kids are memorizing poems and getting ready to perform for Peach Blossom. Roosevelt Elementary continued to work on their reward and incentive program for eye-ready and growth, and so they gave certificates and raffle prizes for kids who improved on their eye-ready scores. And then, this past weekend, Central East High School was hosting a mock trial tournament and they hosted Garza, Buchanan, and Bullard as guests. Each team competed in four rounds, trying the case People versus Clark. Garza High School was the eventual tournament champion. And our high schools will begin the county competition next Tuesday. Both Central and Garza are coming off semifinal finishes from last season. So, we also want to thank Mr. Carfan for coming out and spending the day. He spent that whole day with them for a mock trial, eating with the kids and helping clean up and offering support. So, we want to thank you. And there were other board members as well that offered support, so thank you very much. We appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, may I invite up Angie Aguirre, California School Employees Association President.
Hi, just a couple of items. I'm a little shorter than Laura. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday and a good start of the new year. Just had a couple of things. We are still in negotiations. We're getting closer. It's been very positive. Hopefully, we can wrap up things pretty quickly. On the other note, our job study. We are continually still doing our job study, meeting with our members for each classification two to three nights a week. It's a long process, but it's getting done slowly but surely. It's been very positive. A lot of our members are very excited to have a new job description and to be able to have their input in what can go in there and what is not supposed to be in there. So, it's been very positive and I thank the district for allowing us to have this process. So, hopefully, we can have everything done within the next month or two. If not, it'll take just as long as we need, but it's been a very positive outlook for our chapter and for our members. So, thank you, guys. And that's it. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, we invite communications from our superintendent board.
All right, I've got a couple of announcements. I am pleased to report back, our first winter session was a great experience for our students, so thank you to the team, both within Educational Services and all of our high school administrators and counselors. We had 109 students who had struggled in Semester One of Math One, which is a foundational course. They need to do well in to proceed through mathematics, and 85 of them have now passed that course, so they're heading into second semester with some, a much stronger grasp of the content. 28 seniors that needed to get credits or gain credits to graduate participated, went by and visited all those classrooms and kids, and collectively, that group of seniors earned 185 credits that were recovered to help them towards graduation. And really proud of the students who, when their friends were all home and cozy, they were getting to school and spending a full day working on the things that will make them better and their opportunities in front of them better. So, really impressed with that effort. And so, Dr. Boatright, thank you for you and your team putting on a new venture for our students to have access to. I was going to mention mock trial, but it's gotten a lot of attention already. That was a pretty incredible thing to add in for our students. They just don't get enough time to participate. The mock trial events are actually a very short season of time, so to host other school districts to come over, I heard from some, from parents from those districts that were really impressed that our team had thought of that, and so way to go, Central East. Fresno County School Trustees Dinner, you may have just received a notification. I want to alert you that it is on January 16th. That's right around the corner. The meeting will be at the State Center Community College District at Fresno City College at 7:00. Please let Anita know as soon as you can so that she can respond on your behalf. And then, I also want to remind you, when we did our calendar in December, we identified January 30th, Tuesday, January 30th, at 6:00 PM for our first work session of this calendar year, focused on facilities. And so, invites for that will be going out as well. Also, let me pull this up. I do want to share as well, Biola is doing a community plan update meeting, so an opportunity for the community of Biola to share how they think Biola should grow, what should be available within the community. And so, our Biola residents are encouraged to attend on Wednesday, January 17th, at the Biola Community Service Center at 6:00 PM, and we'll make sure that this information is also shared out, how we share flyers out. That is all I've got. Thank you and welcome back.
Trustee Solis.
As the superintendent already said, we had a workshop scheduled for January 30th, which is a Tuesday. That is also the same day as the Cuda Scoob Board Dinner. There's going to be a lot of other Scoob Boards from the area there. It's a good time for us to see what they're going on. Of course, if we're going to have a workshop, we're not going to be able to attend. Is there a will with the board to move the date or is it going to, no one's going to be available to reschedule?
I would not be opposed if there's consensus from the board. I don't think formal action is necessary. We just need to provide direction.
We will follow up with Superintendent Davis and make sure that that information goes out to the board.
Thank you.
Any other board communications at this time? Trustee Carfan.
Thank you. Again, shout out to our Central East and Justin Garza mock trial teams. It was a great tournament. Congratulations to Garza for winning the Justice for All tournament, and thank you Buchanan and Bullard for driving up to Central. Also want to just highlight a food and toy giveaway in Biola Community Center that trustee Carrillo and trustee Cervantes were with. That was a great event. Also, there with VFW 5845 and the sheet metal workers, Local 104. But really, I think the Santa that came through was trustee Cervantes. He was running around just directing everything, so thank you, sir, for, you know, bringing the holidays for everyone there.
Thank you. Now, we invite any comments from the public for items that are not currently on the agenda. This is an opportunity for those in the audience and we'll also have an opportunity for those that may be viewing online if they wish to comment on anything not on the agenda.
I have one comment from the public, Augustin Robles, and you'll have two minutes.
All right. Good afternoon, President Singh, Superintendent Davis. Thank you for giving the opportunity to bring something up. What are we experiencing in El Capitan Middle School, where I teach? I'm from El Capitan, teaching Spanish and physical ed, and I also coach three sports right now. So, this has brought to my attention that they're trying to cancel teaching Spanish as a 7th graders for the kids that come in into our schools, right? It was into voting between the high schools and the middle schools here. And me talking to the new teacher from Glacier Point, which is, I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, and talking to Ms. Reese, which is in Rio Vista, we've been, we actually went to school together and we know the importance of being bilingual, especially here in the Central Valley. And I believe, and I've been mentioning this since I started El Cap with the prior administration, that, you know, we're supposed to divide the two groups, not necessarily 7 and 8, but put, you know, people who already know Spanish, coming from Mexico, coming from all the Latin American countries. That's very important for us to keep pushing that and teaching them. And I know people mentioned that, you know, we lose numbers from 7th grade to 8th and kids drop, and the main reason for that is they get pulled out of the classroom to put them in reading intervention because obviously, they're new to the country, so they want to get better in Spanish because they're 11, 12 years old, whereas, you know, they have not gained grammar or proper Spanish out of their home countries. So, we're trying to help them out and keep the 7 teaching them, you know, Spanish because we know, being bilingual here in the valley, especially, you know, is very useful for them, for their future, for their careers and everything else. And I remember President Singh, you stepped into my classroom four years ago, I believe, and he goes, you know, whatever you need, go talk to us. I, this is the first time I'm here, and hopefully, we can get something going on there, get more info for the benefits of the students. And I believe, you know, we had a great number coming to 7th grade and going to 8th grades, you know, because I, we try to teach them how to produce the language, not only recognizing because, you know, recognition is the first thing, but you'd learn a second language there. It happened to me when I came here, and we try to use the same model, the same strategies for them to keep learning. And I don't think if we just take off teaching them Spanish at the 7th grader, I don't think it's going to be the good thing for them. And I believe, and you can maybe consider and help us out, to keep 7 and 8 and keep them as an advanced and beginner class, if that's possible, all right? That's all I have for now. I might have more ideas later on, but right now, you know, I've got only three minutes here, and I do appreciate the time and thank you very much for all you do. I'm happy where I'm at and keep doing the good thing, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other public comments at this time.
I have a quick question regarding the public comment. I believe sometime maybe a year ago, maybe even longer, there, we requested an item for the board to hear about the Spanish pathway and that there were credits being given for 7th and 8th grade. When is that item expected to return to the board for discussion?
So, there was, there have been two meetings held during the first semester to discuss this item with staff from both the middle schools and the high schools. There's another meeting that will be convened within the next couple of weeks to determine what's best for our students, but in no way are we decreasing the program at all. We're actually looking to expand the program to make it more accessible to more students. So, there have been no final decisions that have been made at this time. So, once that information becomes available through that committee, then we can bring that forward to you.
Okay. Do we have an expected timeline?
I want to say mid to late February.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boatright. Are there any comments from the public at this time?
There are no current comments from the public at this time.
And Clerk Carfan?
None for public comment.
Thank you. So, next, we move on to our consent agenda and did want to highlight that we are adopting a resolution declaring January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Carrillo. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries 7-0. We move on to our action items for this evening. The first one, adopt a resolution 23, 24, 25, proclaiming January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize that January is Board Appreciation Month, and you as board members, we do want to take this moment to recognize you. Attached to this item is a resolution, and also in front of you is a certificate to acknowledge our appreciation of the work that you do as elected officials. And so, if I can take just a moment and share the proclamation that, in the attached resolution for School Board Recognition Month, January 2024, whereas California has designated January as Board Recognition Month, a time set aside to recognize the contributions of school boards to the academic, social, emotional, physical, and mental health needs of students, and whereas an excellent public education is vital to the quality of life for all California citizens and communities, and whereas school board members continue to advocate for the students in our community to thrive, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual, and whereas school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the healthiest environments possible where all students can thrive, and school board members are responsible for building and maintaining the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, you are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district, and the mission of public schools to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society in an ever-changing world is more poignant than ever before, now than ever before. So, Central Unified School District does hereby declare appreciation to the members of this school board and proclaim the month of January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month, and I urge our community members to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members, and I appreciate and thank you for the work that you do. Thank you. And I would recommend that you approve this item.
I will leave that to my colleagues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And I will abstain. We move on to approving revised board policies. Dr. Boatright.
Thank you so much. So, we have a number of policies that are returning tonight for your approval. I can go ahead and start off with the first one here. Sorry, let me get this in front of me. So, the first one that I have here is Board Policy 0430. This is the Comprehensive Local Plan for Special Education. Essentially, this just means that we will make publicly available the special education funding that we receive on a yearly basis. The second board policy is 5148.3. This is the Preschool Early Childhood Education Board Policy. This policy is updated to reflect several new laws. Essentially, it revises and updates requirements for our California State preschool programs, including requirements to dual-language learners, our children with exceptional needs, and then enrollment data collection reporting. This is information that is reported each year to the state. And then, the last. And then the last one that I have for Educational Services are high school graduation requirements. This policy is updated to reflect, um, the new law, which expands and then strengthens the exemptions from grad requirements for our students that are highly mobile. Um, it includes a requirement for districts to annually report to, um, the state regarding the number of students who for that prior school year graduated with an exemption from our district-established graduation requirements. So they would graduate with the state requirements only.
The other five I carried forward and, uh, shared last meeting, communications with public media relations, district school websites, and then the board bylaws also for attorney and agenda, um, meeting and materials. And so second reading, if there's any adjustments that, uh, you would like to recommend to language, we'd like to capture those and then recommend approval of these policies.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, a second by Trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. We move on to, um, action item number three, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. Administration is recommending the board to accept gifts to the district. Uh, as a follow-up, the district will be sending thank you letters to the donors.
Any question, uh, comments or questions from the board?
I'll move to accept the gifts.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Correa, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. And we want to thank, of course, uh, Saint George Greek Orthodox Church and of course Sierra Challenge Express for their generous gifts. We move on to our information items for this evening. Uh, item number one, receive information regarding School Facilities Planning Committee. Superintendent Davis?
Thank you. And I'm going to see if I can actually use the remote from this location for the presentation. Uh, tonight I'm going to provide you both with a quick summary and also a recommendation from the School Facility Committee for your consideration. Just as a review of background, uh, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, during the facility workshop, there was discussion about, uh, the need to evaluate our space, uh, our enrollment and, and, uh, what work had been done since Justin Garza High School had opened and Central High School had become a school of choice. Uh, later on, May, uh, twenty-third, uh, the board elected President Singh and Trustee Solis to participate among the representatives and other stakeholder groups on a school facility committee. Uh, we took, uh, nominations or requests for those applications as soon as start, uh, school started this year and, uh, have met up until the winter break. So our task was to discuss the options, conduct a community survey uh, for insight into the desires of the community and then return a recommendation to you, which is what brings us here this evening. We're going to go ahead and start some slides on this to walk you through some of the background. Uh, we also had a rotating seat while that is coming up, maybe? I'm looking at Kayla, maybe I'll have. I think my direction's not great, so Tammy will run it. It's on. I checked the first thing. Thanks, Tammy. Uh, we did have a rotating seat. Uh, Trustee Grifon did attend a meeting as well to just get a feel for what was going on in, in the sessions. So as I mentioned, our responsibility was to, um, uh, take a look at how might we balance enrollment between our campuses? Uh, what might we do to, uh, help in, in terms of, uh, handling our, our needs of our schools of choice, our desires of our students and our community, and really, um, keep a healthy balance of, um, choice and interest of, of students in, in what we offer. So the committee work in terms of the timeline for it, I think we're using, there we go. Uh, we did the application as was stated as soon as, uh, school came back. And then this committee of individuals committed every Monday night, um, in the fall. We worked, um, in November. Uh, we conducted a community-wide, uh, survey to solicit input. So after the committee had made, uh, some recommendations with pros and cons, uh, got that out to our students and our parents and our staff. And then returned in December to review that information, see if that information might adjust, uh, where they were in terms of a, of a committee and in their discussions. And that brings us to this evening. The committee itself, you may recall, uh, a review of who would make up this committee. And also, um, when you selected your participation on it, uh, we also agreed that this committee would be comprised of students from each of those campuses, uh, parents, um, from both Central High School as well as, uh, parents of other high school and middle school campuses, uh, c- board members, community members, um, folks that would represent higher education if we had some questions or needed things around, um, like our early college, for example, at Central High School. We had teachers, uh, site leaders from other campuses and then support staff and, and external expertise. So we had a facilitator who helped us through this process. Uh, this group kicked around a whole lot of ideas the first meeting and, uh, landed on two options. And these are the two options that went out to the community with a, a request of, and, and why it read two options on the table so far was the third ask was, what if there's something else? Suggest a different option as well. Option one, in brief, what I will share is, uh, maintaining Central High School as a school of choice with the addition of a full program. So going back to the original discussions when we were opening Justin, uh, Justin Garza High School, we had a five-year plan of, uh, removing the tether between Central High School and Central East Campus when it came to athletics and arts and full program. That was consistently heard, um, by our students and our families of, um, some of the reasons they choose to go to the campuses that they go to is they're looking for that full, complete high school experience. There was, uh, discussion about, um, the benefit of choice and that families, when they do make a decision to go to Central High School, it is a smaller campus. Um, there is a, a lower ratio that, uh, the students enjoy, that the, the, the feel of the campus is different and really meets, um, some of our students' needs. Uh, the unique programs there, our, our agriculture program, our education program, our criminology program, uh, and certainly our early college as well, uh, were a draw. And, um, and, and the distractions, uh, seemed to, to be, um, uh, minimalized there for those that expressed why they had changed to that campus. By adding athletics and arts to that program, one of the pros also was that the distractions that come from shuttling to and from campus, uh, would be eliminated because the programs would be fully in place at the high school. There are cons to this option that the group brought up as well. Uh, unstable staffing can occur when you have a school of choice because as enrollment declines, staff has to move over to an alternative campus where the students are. And that staff member may have the specialty of certain clubs or programs or, uh, or be growing those programs. And so the instability of that, or perhaps the instability of a group of students who all love one sport and are moving along in program and there's no JV freshman sport to continue it on. Some of those instabilities really became, uh, clear cons to this group. There was also an expression from individuals in the group that, that is noted here that, uh, continuing a school of choice is a risk and we might be shortly from this time to a few years out, having to revisit this again. And so there was some, some desire expressed around the room of if we're, if we're going to have this conversation, can we come up with something that's very stable, uh, and would take us into the future? Obviously a con when we do anything where we're adding program is costs associated with it. And, uh, and, and then, um, you know, a con that came up in all of our discussions is if you drive around, you see housing expansion. Veterans Boulevard's been opened. There's a lot of houses going in. So no matter what we do with our high school campuses, we still need to maintain awareness of enrollment at any of the campuses and, and program needs of the students moving in. So that's option one. So think of it as choice plus, plus that full program. Option two is, uh, to create a base boundary for each of the three high schools, which automatically assumes that each campus will also have their programs, athletic programs. And the transfer process that we have in place would continue to allow for that family or that student who wants to, uh, attend a certain specialized program. So we have that transfer system in, in process or in, in, in place. Uh, adding the competitive, uh, performing arts and athletics. And then of course to do that same issue as option one, um, which, you know, is listed is, is a con, which is there's cost to it. And, and neither of these options are free. I'm sorry, we couldn't devise a, a free option. Um, the pros to option two is, is you may see, uh, leveling the playing field among our high schools in terms of student appeal by having those programs at each campus. We heard that loud and clear from both survey and students, um, about that desire. A pro of this also, again, like the other, is it removes shuttling between two campuses, which increases instructional time and a lack of, of disruption. And a pro is that even with this system, people could see clearly that families and students can still have a choice to use the transfer process to, to elect a, a specialty program, like our ag program, for example. The committee came up with these options. Uh, we actually have a student who happens to be here, Ravneet Kar. Thank you. She did a video to help as a member to explain to students so that when the survey went out, there was a little context around what that they were giving input on. And so our, our step between meetings was to ask both students, uh, staff, community, parents to, uh, give us their opinion. Uh, were we missing any pros and cons to these? And is there a better option? In the comments, some of the options of plans that we came up with then at that last meeting, the group talked about. Uh, there continued to be ideas such as, um, lottery everyone. Uh, everybody could come in on a lottery and, and the school gets, uh, built by, uh, just, you, you submit your, your request to a campus, an order of campuses and get placed. Uh, ninth graders at all at one campus and then moving over to the other campuses, uh, adding different grade levels. I mean, there were a lot of different, um, innovative ideas that came up. And, uh, the committee had to look at that as well as the results, which, uh, if we go to the next slide, Dr. Boatwright? Uh, overall, when we combined all of the results of our community, what you see is choice continues to be most interesting at, at almost sixty percent of, of those that participated. What you also see is no matter what decision is made, there will be some people that are happy with that decision and some people that would have preferred a different decision. And so this wasn't a, a clear cut. We got it right. The one that, that we're all interested in is also the one that, that everyone else in the community is interested in. Uh, I can also share when we broke down the information and took a look at, uh, the details of the survey, the students and the parents, uh, predominantly were the, the ones that would prefer school of choice over a boundary. Um, and the staff and community, uh, were more inclined to select, set a boundary. When you think about stability with staff, stability with program, um, having been in the system and seen what we're doing with our school of choice, that didn't really surprise the committee that those, those results existed. I also want to mention in this case, we try not, when we have surveys, to take instructional time away um, from, uh, from instruction to participate in surveys. And in this case, we did ask our elementary schools, so those fifth and sixth graders that are going to be high school students somewhat soon, for them to participate in their class. That's why we had the video to help explain it, our middle school and our high school. So we had a, a pretty big turnout for, um, for student voice in this. Go to the next. Thank you. So the committee first, um, essentially recorded their individual thoughts after all the discussion took place before we did the survey, reviewed the survey and, um, and, and then conducted it again. And this was at the final meeting. You can see the predominant, um, desire of the committee or the prioritized recommendation was to, to look at option two when bringing this information forward to you. The next one. Okay. So, um, when looking at the, um, some of the, I guess, excuse me, I want to back up for just a minute because I skipped a part of here. Do you want to go back one slide? Tammy and Jack, do you guys want to share a little bit about why students and the staffing piece? I'm sorry, I missed that earlier.
Yes, so absolutely. So our students, um, and listening to them during this process, they really wanted, um, that complete high school experience. Um, having athletic teams, having the performing arts, um, at their school of residence was very, very important to them.
I think it's also safe to say that in either option one or in option two, there are student enrollment and staffing implications. Uh, if you look at option one, um, uh, the fluctuation of, of student enrollment year to year is something you would have to monitor very, very closely because it has a direct impact on how many teachers or staff members they'd be, they'd need to be able to operate that, that site in option one. Um, that shared some concern with, with some of the individuals in the room, um, because it would have, you know, watching closely on that particularly, uh, predominantly that freshman enrollment to see how many teachers they may need. And it could potentially cause frequent pulling from either Garza or, or East Campus or maybe another school site to be able to fill those needs. And w- without a base enrollment as, as an option two, uh, it could take away the, kind of the cultural harmony and staff collaboration from that side. Those are some of the things that were shared, I think, in option two. Um, again, staffing and, and enrollment implications are certainly present there. However, in that particular case, you know, if boundaries were drawn, you'd have a, uh, baseline of enrollment based on, uh, you know, residents, which does allow for more, um, uh, kind of a, more of a firm staffing base, if that makes sense. Timeline-wise, uh, depending on when this does take place, uh, communications, uh, watching, uh, enrollment uh, and, and making communications with our, our, our certificated staff and classified staff. We aim to do that at least, you know, one semester preceding, at least one semester preceding the start of the, the new setup. So that's some of the information we took away from the group.
Good evening. Both options have certain cost. And option two is, uh, a little bit less, approximately about eight million dollar. And this budget has three important fa- uh, parts. The first part is, uh, when you introduce new programs to new campuses, there's going to be some startup cost. And the second one is, um, the staff will follow the students, but still we have to have some new hire. And the third is, uh, we have to do, uh, facility upgrade. And this will be done in phases, depending on cash flow and other fiscal obligations. So those are big item, tickets items. Thank you.
I think the, the challenge with this also, when we're talking about boundaries, and, and I do also want to express it was discussed, is, um, our district has enjoyed the ability to have choice and many choices at the high school level. And that, uh, the, the idea of boundaries for lots of reasons that were just shared, um, is strong until it affects you personally. And, and we recognize that in bringing this priority forward or this recommendation forward, that, that it, there are lots of unanswered questions about boundaries. And, and in the conversation with the facility group, we had to reset to say, you know, the scope of their work was really to look at what the options would be to balance it. It was not to establish or, I mean, there were certain ideas that were, were kicked around with it, but it wasn't of their scope to then say, and we would suggest doing it this way, that that, that takes on its own process. So we wanted to have an opportunity, uh, this evening for information, um, to answer questions or, or understand what your needs are in terms of, uh, really taking this consideration and, and next steps. Uh, I also do know that some of the committee members, um, we did share it with the entire committee that we would be here in this process. And while they had already invested a lot of time, if they did want to come share any of their thoughts, that they could be here this evening to do that as well.
Thank, thank you, um, to all, all those that participated in the workshop and, and, um, gave up all those nights and of course our, our staff. I, I'm going to probably invite, uh, Trustee Solis and I'll probably give some comments, but I, I heard we have some folks in the staff, uh, sorry, in the audience that would like to share about this as well?
Uh, yes. Our first public comment is from, uh, Chris Williams. And you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening Superintendent Davis and members of the board. Number one, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come up here and share my thoughts. And thank you for the opportunity to be on the committee. My name is Chris Williams. This is my twenty-fifth year at Central High School and my twenty-fifth year as a teacher. I'm an ag teacher out at Central High School. Ultimately, and I guess most of what I'm going to say because they did such a great job with the presentation, is really a reiteration of the things that have already been said. But I wholeheartedly believe that option number two is the best option for our district, for our community, for our students, and for Central High School, in addition to the other two campuses as well. In the twenty-five years that I've worked for this district, I've heard this discussion come up many a times. I've worked in the model where we were a freshman campus. And that very much changed the culture of our campus. And we were glad to have those freshmen there. And a lot of those freshmen ended up staying in the program. But when you have a very youngster-heavy culture at a high school, it changes the opportunities for students. And there's a lot more behavior management. And we don't see that upperclassman number really being able to set the example for those freshmen. And I don't believe that going to a freshman campus again is the answer. I'm a huge proponent of option two. I really believe that bringing sports to our campus is going to help create a positive culture for Central High School. At some point, this deal's going to have to go full bore again. I mean, houses are being built everywhere. It's coming. Okay? And if we get ourselves prepared and we put ourselves in a position to be successful with it now, we're going to be miles ahead. If we just keep passing the buck, it's going to be someone else's problem, but it will be a problem, in my opinion. But if we bring sports and arts out to our campus, we're going to provide opportunity for even more students. We're going to have fifty percent more students have the opportunity to play varsity sports. And that's fifty percent more students who may get a nod from a college, fifty percent more students who may get a scholarship or an opportunity that wasn't previously there. And yes, I know there's a financial cost, but it's an investment. It's not a lost cost. It's an investment in our future and an investment in our community. Ultimately, having sports out on Dickinson will help relieve the need for students to be shuttled during the day and lost instructional time. And I know it's hard to believe when you look at me, but I am not an athlete myself. I didn't grow up playing sports. But I will tell you that I really gained an appreciation for athletics and for sport, number one, when I became a teacher, and number two, when I became a dad, because I see what it does for kids. I'm a huge proponent of our ag department, obviously, but as a parent and as a teacher, I see what athletics does for kids and what, also what it does for a community and what those Friday night football games do. And having that opportunity for Central High School to have that again and have a community that backs our campus. And instead of the competition-
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Time, you said? Instead of the competition being for kids, let the competition happen on those sports fields and in the show ring and in the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is Principal Holtermann. You'll have three minutes as well.
Superintendent Davis, President of the Board, seeing members of the board, thank you again for this opportunity. First, I'd like to thank everyone who was on that committee, who took the time. There were many nights. Again, the work to balance the populations of the schools was critical and we knew that. And again, I want to publicly thank Gary Jansen. I think he did a good job objectively moderating the process. So, I want to say first also, all of our schools are doing amazing and special things in their own way. And this is a complicated issue. We know it's not easy to make this decision or to even move forward with it. But when we began our original high school transition committee, everyone had the greatest intention to spread out the populations of the students. And Central High School took the challenge to be a school where students would choose to be there for a variety of reasons. The decision to add early college gave us one of those reasons to have students want to be a part of the tradition, history and legacy of Central High School. Right now, having a junior with a four-point-five-two who will have two years of college finished when she graduates is testimony to that positive decision and one of the reasons students are choosing currently to be at Central High School. Our teachers also understand the need to be a school that provided innovative ways of teaching and learning. And that is why we've chosen as a school to allow retakes for exams for full credit. One result of this effort was increased proficiency in the course content, which lowers our DNF rates and increases the number of students with three-point-oh or higher and then subsequently increases our graduation rate. That's the long-term effect of that. Our award-winning ag program, criminology, education, health careers pathway, like everybody talked about, these are amazing programs. And we also have a very clean campus because our students take and staff take really, take a lot of pride in what they do at that campus. We know it's not new, but we want to keep it clean. With the many great opportunities that wait students who have chosen CHS, it's not been enough and been the solution to consistent freshman enrollment from one year to the next. The rural location of the site, the newness of Garza, and the number of students, friends' groups continue to have a large impact on where eighth grader decides to go. And it's made it hard to gain students. Also, obviously, opening up a class after class, that would make sense also. The committee also discussed having our own sports teams, which I wholeheartedly agree with, and then the work to begin to update our facilities. The overwhelming understanding of the committee based upon hours of discussion and multitude of factors was that CHS should have an attendance area to guarantee a specific base population. This would help in addressing the overcrowding of Justin Garza. I believe that that was the correct decision of the committee and would provide consistency for students, personnel, and help us field the athletic teams that we want to field. But I also know the survey stated that the majority wanted the option of status quo with an attendance area, but more marketing and obviously the other things. But I wholeheartedly believe in getting the opinion of those who we serve. I really do. But the challenge in the process and the survey was that we were asking many of them who are willing to be required to go to a new school, that we're asking them, like Superintendent Davis talked about, there's an inherent, I want to say bias, but-
Thank you, Principal Holtermann. You can finish your sentence.
Do you mind if I finish? Thank you. The only way to actively balance the population of our district is to have attendance areas, just like the committee discussed and recommended. It's the right decision for the long-term of Central Unified, its high schools and our students. And you will rarely hear a student saying that going to CHS was the wrong choice. Like anything new, change is difficult, but our community will respect the right decision over time as the fruits of the decision become evident. Thank you for your consideration of this complex issue.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Wynema Campbell. And then after will be Tricia Assi.
Okay. Good evening, Board and cabinet members. Well, I'm not really bringing anything new to the table of what my colleagues, Principal Holtermann and Mr. Williams said, but my name is Wynema Campbell and I have been teaching in Central for nineteen years. For the past five years, I've been at Central High School and I am the education pathway teacher. I respect the deep roots and traditions that Central High School upholds and all of our students who choose to be there. But it's not a secret that our enrollment is down. It's not where it needs to be, hence the purpose of this, of the facilities committee. So, we have recruited, we have advertised and built some tremendous programs at Central High School. I know I'm part of one of those and have advertised and recruited like crazy. However, it's really hard to compete with the beautiful facilities at Justin Garza and the mature sports programs that are established at Central East. In fact, I was doing my duty at the basketball game right before I came here and it's, and we were just kind of laughing about it. A lot of the parents are like, "Oh, you don't teach here?" No, I'm at Central West, but we're still, we're still connected. So, after attending these meetings, it became obvious that our only long-term solution would be to draw boundaries. However, that being said, Central needs some serious improvements in order to do that. In order to keep us competitive and desired, we need to be able to offer the sports and VAPA programs that the other schools offer. But on a personal note, I know that this will be a point of contention for some families and students who don't want to come out to Central High School. We are a rural school. We are far away from some of our city theaters and our school is old. But I think those families will come to find that Central High School is truly a special place. I am so proud to be a teacher there. Our teachers and staff are some of the best out there. Our pathways, dual enrollment, and our highly decorated ag department are just some of the few things that make me a proud teacher. We are a growing district and adding boundaries while simultaneously revamping Central High School, I feel, is the only option. And that will create three equitable high school campuses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Next up is Tricia Assi.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Assi and I live in the district. I also have worked at Central High School since 2011. I have three children and I look forward to my little ones attending any one of our high schools in the future. Aside from the staff members that participated in the facilities planning committee, several of our board members, our parents, and students committed to regularly attending these meetings. And I would like to personally thank everyone that did. Your efforts and perseverance in making sure that our district is putting the needs of our students first is impressive and much appreciated. Being a part of the committee was eye-opening and allowed me to better understand the challenges and opportunities that our district will foresee as the student population in our district continues to grow. Some of these issues need to be addressed immediately if we want to ensure that students at all three high schools are receiving an equitable education and access to the same extracurricular opportunities. We have some pressing campus issues, but aside from that, we also have infrastructural and staffing issues that impact the students that we serve. Shuttleling between campuses to create equitable access to academic and athletic sports is a Band-Aid that causes a loss of student instruction time for all students, not just those that shuttle, and does not remedy the larger issues that need to be addressed. I understand the optimism of making CHS a campus of choice and not drawing district lines a few years ago. However, we've watched enrollment at CHS decline each and every year since Justin Garza was opened. CHS currently has only around six-hundred-and-sixty students, while Justin Garza is far over capacity. Campus selection opened December and we are likely going to lose even more students at CHS next year. Having a steady student and staff population would allow us to provide more equitable access to student standalone academic and sports programs for the students that are attending CHS. One remedy to both overcrowding and to the extracurricular opportunities is to draw district boundary lines sooner than later. We cannot provide equitable access without having a steady enrollment, population of students, and stable staff numbers at each campus. Our district leadership and the high school and junior high staff have done an amazing job of ensuring that students have information to make educated campus selection choices. But additionally, though, the amount of time it takes to ensure that every student is informed about each of these campuses also competes with the time they could be receiving academic instruction in their junior high classes. While I can't speak on behalf of all members of the facilities committee, it became apparent to many of us that the only feasible option moving forward is to draw some type of district boundaries between the three campuses. Thank you for your time.
Our next comment is from Ravneet Kar.
Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Ravneet Kar and I am a senior at Central High School. I've been a part of the facilities planning committee, which came together in order to discuss probable choices and discuss the options shown to you today. As a student, I urge you to really go over what is best in order to make a longstanding decision. It has been devastating to see less and less students attending Central High School each year. There is so much that is offered at Central High School. However, it has been very hard to market those great things to parents, students, and the community as it felt like the opening of Justin Garza was completely publicized. It was discussed in the committee that Central High School should have athletics and be completely separated in order for students attending there to have a proper high school experience. Based on feedback from the students, they have been devastated by this news due to the fact that many liked having that connection to the other campus. They believe that disconnecting the central campuses only makes going to Central High School less pleasing. Nonetheless, many students firmly believe that throughout both options, the remodeling and renovation should be emphasized for our school. Central High School is loved and cherished-
Down the road, you know, years in the future for another board to resolve? Or can we face this issue this year? Can we get our information, answer these tough questions and communicate with and listen to family, students, and our staff so we can make this change as smooth as possible? Because we're going to have to at some point. There's just not enough room at our other two sites. And there's room for, seems to be a thousand more students at Central High.
Trustee Solis.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the community for participating in the survey. As far as the members of the committee, thank you. You've invested a lot of your time and I appreciate it very much. I've heard the discussions within the committee. I think you did a good job about going through all the options. I think option two is where we're at. The reality is you're not going to make everybody happy in the district. I have been on the boards for a while. I have never voted for a boundary that everybody in the district stood up and said they were for. But we have to think ahead and think about, A, the history of Central High School. There's a history there, a strong history in the community that I would like to continue to support. There's the reality of our district is going to be changing as far as population. We just recently had Veterans Boulevard come in and I can assure you, the developers aren't going to be far behind. And so, we're going to have more kids, not less. So, it's better, I think, right now if we take, bite the bullet and go ahead and support option two with the understanding that we delegate a plan to administration to bring us, best-case scenario, how would they implement option two. As well as facilities, if we waited until Garza was completely complete for students, there wouldn't be anybody there. So, how are we going to bring this up, the facilities up at Central? It's going to take a little time. And the good chances is, and I, I'm probably the only one on the board at this point that wants to talk about it, is we're going to have to talk about a school bond measure. With that, we're going to address the facilities at Central High School. Now, I will say this, it's been my experience with this board, that they are supporting Central High School and there's going to be bulldozers out there fairly soon, breaking ground on a new building out there. I like the location of the building because just about anyone drives by the high school is going to see this new building going up. So, yes, we're going to have to build new facilities. How that's going to be exactly done, that's going to be up to administration to bring us some proposed plans, how we're going to do that. We can leapfrog or we can take baby steps. But either way, we're going to have to do that. As far as three high schools, the community knows it, so we might as well just say it. We have three high schools. And we're going to have to do whatever it takes to have those three high schools functioning for the multiple reasons that were brought up into the committee, not just one. There's a lot of reasons why we need to do that. I do feel that as far as the quality of education that we're providing, the staff we have at Central High School is doing a good job. But unfortunately, because of the change in population, one day you might need four history classes, the next semester it may be only three. We have to stabilize the student population so we can stabilize the staff. And then, not only do we have the students buying into the facility, but we have the staff that has history and buying in that facility as well. That's it.
Thank you. I saw trustee Sellers and we had a malfunction, so appreciate those that were patiently waiting and will take some calls from the public, but trustee Sellers.
The eight-point-five-million-dollar option for option two, does that include an estimate for transportation costs as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then, last question, are we still intending to keep the dual enrollment courses at its current location?
Yes, we will. Yes.
Trustee Servantes.
Thank you, Board Chair. Well, we're definitely in the business of educating kids, not shuttling kids. So, I am definitely not, and have been in great dislike of shuttling kids back and forth and taking away their instructional time. It not only takes away their instructional time, it disrupts the entire classroom going to and from wherever they're entering or wherever they're leaving. Do we know what it would look like? Because I, I'm a pretty firm believer, without all the additional enhancements that need to be done at the high school, that if we add the sports programs, I think that in itself will draw more kids. I think if you're, and I'm not being offensive, you have to almost be an elite athlete to make any one of these varsity teams nowadays. And you have to be almost a year-round athlete. There's a lot of students that maybe don't fall in that classification, they would like to go out and play at a- They would like to go out and play at a different high school. I kind of feel like that would draw them out. Do we know what that would look like if we just added the sports programs? And I know it's not just about sports, but like Mr. Williams said, sports did a lot for me. And it was something I gravitated to. And so I can see where a lot of students, it's where they can identify an identity, a band, you know, an additional band. I'm totally against shuttling the kids back and forth. But we have to be fiscally responsible to the point that we have to be able to keep our doors open. So making these decisions, and the boundaries, in my opinion, would have been completely different and a lot easier to do if our two high schools weren't sitting on top of each other. The realities are way too close together. And so we have kids that are going to Garza that can't go to, I'm sorry, they go to Glacier, that can't go to Garza, that have to go to East, and, you know, there's a lot of disruption. But with all that being said, we didn't make that choice, we inherited that choice, and now we have to deal with it, but it is what it is. Yeah, I think at one point in time, we're gonna have to create boundaries, no matter what we do. But based on the fact that we have some elementaries that are almost 1,000 elementary students, I think Harvest is pushing, how many? So we have to build another elementary, we have to take that swell away. So there are, it's a complicated, and I know most of you, I see a lot of you nod in your heads, they understand it's a lot more complicated than just dividing boundaries, and this is the way it's gonna be, and we're done. But at the same token, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. And so I think we have to look at every option possible, and obviously a bond measure. And I'm a legacy, I'm gonna say I'm a legacy graduate of Central High School, right? That was the original orange and black. So it's always gonna hold a special place in my heart. But besides that, those families have been out there, those are legacy taxpayers that have, they've been building other schools. And Central, in essence, I don't wanna say has been neglected, but there's been some other things that have taken precedence over that. It's not nice, it's a reality. With that being said, they too deserve, right, as taxpayers, they deserve a bright and shiny new building. Cafeteria, other than the old bomb shelter that's still out there, that every time I drive by there, that's what it reminds me of, just missing the bunkers and sandbags on both entries. Anyway, I'm joking. But with that being said, is there a mechanism that we can borrow money, right? Can we, are there other options that we look at other than, because I think we gotta be creative. We have to find a way to be creative to make this work. And hence, we're at 2,100 students now, in a year we could be at 2,400, Garza will be completely full. Central East can take a little bit, but the reality is, how do we get more students to go out to the old Central High School? I don't, I don't know, but I'm thinking maybe we should take a look at the sports programs and see what exactly that would cost the district, and then start working on the facilities. Just as an option. But, yeah, I'm glad that you guys are empathetic to our situation, and you're very knowledgeable to our situation, and we're trying to find a mechanism that works for everybody, that's the greater good for students first. And appreciate it, and all those that served on the committee, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think majority of the board agrees that we're gonna have to do boundaries sooner or later. But I'm just asking from administration, if you could, what are those boundaries gonna look like as soon as possible? And what would it take to get there in a timeframe around that? Money's always gonna be an issue, but you know what? We just overspent $7 million on a Futsal deal that could have been half the price of this or took care of this cost. So it's up to this board to be financially responsible, making decisions moving forward so we could actually get this done, because it's important.
Are there comments from the public?
Yes, we have one caller. I have parent, staff, community member Judy Martinez. Give us a second to push through. Hi Judy, you are on with the board. You have three minutes to make your comment. Please make sure you turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear, and we don't get any feedback. Again, you have three minutes, and your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Trustees. Good evening, Superintendent Davis. I'm gonna keep this brief. I think you heard all the arguments. My name is Judy Martinez, as always said, 32-year veteran in Central Unified. Parent, community member. My daughter went to West by choice. And she was one of those athletes that you guys were talking about. So, again, I'm gonna keep it simple. What Chris Williams had to say, what Wayne McCamell had to say, what Tricia Tsai had to say, what Mr. Holtermann had to say, I completely concur with. What they didn't tell you because they are, they were being shy about it is that Central West is a gem. It is like no other school. The teachers out there are there for the right reasons. And I'm not saying our others aren't, but West is very unique in that, and why my daughter chose to go there. So I'm gonna ask respectfully that you go with the committee's decision. Please, respect your decision and go with Option Two, boundaries. Also, I'd be remiss, I agree with what Mr. Savante said. I understand this is a very difficult decision for you. You inherited this, and you have to make some hard decisions. And I know this is a difficult one, so thank you for your time. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board? I think I'll kind of share a bit of my own sort of experience. I think what we have to do is actually not that complicated. I think it's overwhelmingly, like, it's clear that we have to have boundaries. Now, how we do that, the way we do that, that is a little bit more complicated. I really appreciate trustee Corio's comments in terms of making sure that we are looking to do this in an equitable way. My own feeling is when we actually do the first sort of bound, or the most recent boundaries in terms of when we opened Garza and vis-à-vis Central East, so quickly, how's that shown? That those particular boundaries became out of whack. And I think that has, you know, to do in terms of making sure that we're doing our due diligence in terms of what are the, really having a, as best of an understanding as possible of what's possible, of what we want to do in an equitable way that benefits all of our students and not only certain subgroups. And so I think, I think there's, again, reiterating as others have shared, the dedication, the time that so many of our community members, so many of our staff members, and just even our students, you know, spent in those evenings to be able to get us to this place in the conversation. I think, from what I'm hearing, is there's still a lot of information we still need. So my recommendation was that we return this, again, as an information item. Although I think being able, at this point, to start honing the exact numbers that, for instance, the board members are going to need, at least in terms of better being able to make this particular decision. So in terms of having in front of us, you know, our current enrollment numbers, drawing in terms of what our capacities at each of those locations may be, looking at timelines, looking at sort of what phases that might look like. So if we're telling the community, we're gonna have a comprehensive high school at the Central High Campus, so we actually have an idea, when will that be? To have an idea of like, sort of, true costs in terms of the upgrades, the particular sort of recommendations, the renovations. So I think, and again, that only takes us in terms of like, the top level. I think we will have to work with, you know, particular demographers or those that have, can help us a little bit sort of understand where the growth is happening. And just to, and to make sure, because it is very easy, by not doing this with intentionality, to reify existing inequalities in our district. And so I think making sure that we are doing this with the certain forms of intentionality. And I think we do have paths in front of us, you know, if we have, even potentially, where we have three junior high schools, I could foresee a day where we have feeders into the three high schools. But, but again, how you slice the pizza, so the pizza may be the size of the pizza, but how you slice it very much talks about what our values are, what's important to our community, and do we make sure that everybody is important in this district? And so, I would recommend this for, to return as an information item, with a little bit more information before we begin actually, but it looks like the general direction is going to be towards the boundary conversation. Trustee Solis?
I'd like to recommend an Option Two, to bring it back as an action item, and to bring back what we had on the board as an action item. Option One or Two, we vote on whatever one it is. Then we assign a task to administration to bring us back options on how they're gonna to implement whatever we choose. Because otherwise, if we come back with another informational item, that's another informational item, we're gonna come back in one or two meetings. Then we're gonna receive the information, then bring it back again for an action item. We might be in this a month, a month and a half, and still don't have a decision which one we're gonna use. All I'm saying is, bring back an action item on Option One or Two. Have the staff bring back the requested information. If it passes, whatever one passes, then we have staff come back with multiple options for us, how they wish to implement it, and then we can fine-tune the options.
I think, trustee Corio?
I mean, I disagree. I think that there's consensus on the board, and, I mean, those of you that disagree speak up, that we're gonna have to proceed with Option Two. So it's gonna be a matter of now actually looking at what that's gonna look like. So I don't think that formal action by the board, I don't know that there's a divide as to anyone saying we need to consider Option One, that that's still on the table. So I don't, I disagree. I would request, or at least if there's a majority of the board, if there's consensus to bring a fraction, I will not be supporting a decision. So I will be voting no on this item.
Superintendent Davis had a comment?
I think there is a timeline that you can hook onto if a decision can be made when it relates to your questions around boundaries. We are getting ready to bring forward the work in the timeline for a demographer to do the study for Shields and Brawley and get that elementary school underway. Our desire was that this decision may be made in advance of that work, so it could be included. I am a little uncomfortable with, most of the questions we can bring back to you next meeting. There are things that we've already been working on with the committee through the work. The phasing in, that I think is more discussion with us. And then in terms of what the boundaries could be, that would be the demographer's work, and we did not want to execute that work until a discussion decision was made in terms of, do we wanna go that route? If you would rather go that route no matter what and have us begin it, then we will include it, no matter your timeline decision. If you wanna make the decision first, then I would ask that you have a discussion action item of some sorts with our information coming as soon as possible, because our timeline, February to May, is approaching for boundary work already. So, I hope I didn't make it confusing, it's just those pieces could go together into one contract.
I would like more information before I make a decision.
I agree. So I'm a bit unclear on superintendent Davis's comments. So are you saying that an information item next meeting is going to make things more difficult or less?
What I'm suggesting is, if we can have the option, and it sounds like you're speaking to it, I'm posing a question that the sooner we do move to you acting on which option, allows us to leverage some of the other work that we have coming up. And so my interest is to, if it takes two meetings, we wanna be ready for those two meetings to do it. We would prefer not to take a month or two, because we will miss a window to use our demographer's work to maybe look at a larger scale with the boundaries when they're already doing that work with Shields and Brawley. So I'm, whether it's one or two meetings isn't the issue for information to come to you. But I would, I do wanna to hook on to the fact that there is some work that's coming up that your decision will connect to, and I just wanna make you aware of that, because I think we could save money doing it as the same project.
Thank you.
Trustee Solis?
I'm fine for kicking the can down two meetings, if that's what you wanna do, okay? Two meetings isn't gonna make a difference. If you're talking four meetings, then we have an issue. But if the majority of the board is saying, you're willing to make a decision after you get your information, and we'll have an answer within two meetings, that's fine with me. I'll go along with the majority. What I do not wanna see is this to go down a month.
I think it's clear that everyone is talking about a week or two.
Thank you.
Yeah, and ultimately, it's gonna depend on whether we receive enough information that satisfies each and every one of these trustees for us to make a decision. What I don't want to occur again, as happens time and time, when we have these decisions to make, is that we're forced to make a decision, then we're locked in, and then it's like, oh, based on your decision, here are all the other problems that you've just created. Good luck, board. So that would be my recommendation.
So we're asking for an information item at the next meeting, clarifying a number of the comments that you probably wrote down, and I'll follow up with my own notes as well.
I did, and that would be my ask, is if you do have things that you think about as you leave that are gonna be important for you to be prepared for this, the advanced information for us and administration, our goal is to bring you items clear, complete, and ready to go, and that don't put you in a position to be uncomfortable with your decision. So if there's anything that you need, please reach out, the sooner the better. This information will be quick to gather. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to our next information item. Receive information regarding the California School Dashboard. Dr. Boatright?
Okay, thank you so much, and I do have a presentation up there for you to follow. So, sorry about that, multitasking, there we go. Okay, so the California School Dashboard, it's a tool that shows schools and districts how they are performing on state and local indicators. It's also part of the California School Accountability System. So the dashboard does include seven different indicators, those are listed there for you. So we have an academic performance indicator for English Language Arts and Math, English learner progress, graduation rate, suspension rate, chronic absenteeism, and then also the college and career readiness. So this shows you how those performance levels are indicated. So the dashboard displays performance based on two factors. The current year data for that indicator, and then also the difference between the current year and the prior year's data. And so that, the performance information, it's represented with those dials and colors that you see up there on the screen. So the lowest performance is red, whereas the highest level of performance is blue. Okay, so we're going to get started now looking at the information. So what this first slide shows you here, this report shows how well students are meeting grade-level standards on the English Language Arts Assessment. So what you'll see is on the side there is a comparison of Central Unified's performance in comparison to overall state of California. So you'll see there that our students reached the orange performance level, as did the state. What's also shown on this slide is how each subgroup of students performed on ELA. I'd like to point out that our African-American, Asian, our socio-economically disadvantaged, and our white students scored in the yellow performance overall, which is higher than the district and the state. These are the interventions and supports that we do have in place right now for English Language Arts. Based on this information, and also as a follow-up to what I had shared with you in the special board work session last August, many things are continuing that we spoke about previously on how we're working towards improving academic performance. about previously on how we're working towards improving academic performance. We're also increasing accountability this semester, we'll be conducting in-class coaching and support, we're really focused on rigor, and also layering in those culturally affirming practices in our classrooms. Our area admin have been providing this monitoring and coaching all along, and now other district staff, including myself, superintendent Davis, assistant superintendent Mr. Collegian as well, are also going to be going into classrooms to provide that extra level of monitoring and coaching support. I'd like to also mention that that letter's professional development, that we do have 108 teachers that are participating in that training, and that we're also seeing very promising results from the pilot reading core program at the four school sites that are listed there on that slide. This is information on mathematics. So just as we saw with English Language Arts, what you see on the left side of the screen there is a comparison of Central Unified and the state. Our students reached the orange performance level, as did the state. What's also shown on this slide is how each subgroup of students performed. I'd also like to point out on this slide, that when you're looking at our subgroups, you'll see that our African-American students, our socio-economically students scored in the yellow performance overall, which was actually higher than the state and the district And so many of the supports that are in place right now with our math is, are still the things that are in place that we spoke about last August. Again, just as with the English Language Arts, that we're closely monitoring evidence of progress that's tied to our multi-year professional learning plan, we're conducting those in-classroom coaching and support visits, and that we're also monitoring for rigor and the layering in of those culturally affirming practices in the classrooms. Now this slide, very interesting, so I wanted to make sure that I shared this with you. This is showing our progress on the achievement gap between our subgroups. So, based on the TNTP audit that we conducted a couple of years ago, we knew that our African-American students, our students of color, were significantly underperforming academically in comparison to other student subgroups. We very intentionally focused on that group, and I'll give you just a second to look at that slide there, but what it shows you is that the gap is actually decreasing now for English Language Arts and Math. So this is very promising information for our students. This is showing you our dashboard information for English Learner Progress. You'll see there that our Central Unified EL students scored in the same range as, which is orange, as overall in the state of California. In the middle of the screen, you'll see that English Learner Progress Indicator Report, we call this the LP report. This provides information on the percentage of students, EL students, who progressed a level on the LPAC. In 2022, 51.4% of our EL students maintained a level four, that's the highest level, or progressed at least one level. And in 2023, we saw progress with 52.9% of our students either maintain that highest level, or they made progress. These are our EL student supports and interventions. One additional support that has been added on since our August board work session is the migrant after-school program. Now not all of our migrant students are EL students, but a very large portion of them are. The plan is that we pilot this after-school program opportunity at six school sites. By doing so, we have 66 elementary and middle school students that would qualify for this extra layer of support, and our school sites, our admin staff at those sites, and our family outreach liaisons are calling these families right now to plan this and to get ready to launch this in the month of January. Moving on, this shows our dashboard information on our graduation rate. Our district goal is that we will reach 92% graduation rate by June of 2025. This report shows the percent of students who received a high school diploma within four or five years of entering ninth grade, or they completed their graduation requirements at an alternative school site. We are happy with this progress, as seen in this report. Our graduation rate is in the green performance level, whereas the state has stayed in orange. We understand that we still have work to do, but we are happy to see this progress. We plan to maintain this and increase this graduation rate even more. One new addition to this slide from what we shared at the August work session is the winter school. Superintendent Davis did provide some information on this in her comments a little while ago. This just recently concluded over winter break. We had seniors and also students that needed to make up credits in Math I that were enrolled during the seven-day program. Again, we were very happy to see the progress that students made, and they did complete a total of 185 credits. This dashboard slide is providing information on the college and career indicators. This provides a view into whether high school students are prepared for graduation, based on measures like graduation rate, on performance on state tests, and college credit courses. Since this data wasn't gathered by the state last year, this report shows those cell phone like bars that all state indicators showed last year. You may recall those from last year's dashboard report. This is an area that we're currently analyzing to determine what systematic district-wide processes are needed in order to improve, to increase this rate for college and career And then this just shows you some of the things that we're currently doing. And since I don't have my laptop up right now because of the way I'm moving these forward, I'm going to take just a second to pull up my slide. Thank you for your patience. Okay, here we go. So, one of the things, or some of the things that we're doing, so we've increased our dual enrollment offerings. We're evaluating currently, right now, how to restructure our CTE programs to increase completion rates. We just had a great meeting last Thursday with our area administrators, our leader of our IT program, and also Eric Winwick from our assessment department, to start to look at the work that needs to be done. We also have our new area administrator that's joined us, Kristin Rizberg, who came in with a wealth of information in this area, so we're really happy to have her dig in as well. We are also going to be doing a student survey to gather interest in potential new pathways that we can add. We understand that we need to continue to build the capacity of our secondary academic counselors to make sure that they're informed and able to monitor our students' progress on those college and career indicators. We also know that we want to bring our middle school academic counselors on board as well to build their understanding of the college and career indicators. We're scheduling opportunities for our head academic counselors to shadow similar staff in neighboring districts to see what they're doing in this area. And then also, like I said, we're auditing our systems to ensure that we are correctly, efficiently, adequately monitoring our college and career progress. So lots of work to do in this area. The next dashboard report shows you information on our chronic absenteeism rate. This report reflects the percentage of students who are absent 10% or more of the instructional days of the school year. Central Unified shares the same yellow performance level as the state. These are areas here, or items that we spoke about at the August work session, and so we are continuing to move these forward during this next semester. And finally, we have a slide here to show you our dashboard information on suspension rate. This report reflects the number of students who have been suspended at least once during the school year. Central actually placed higher than the state in performance level, and I mean higher in a good way, positive, right, with lower numbers. We're yellow, the state overall is orange. So in general, we're pleased with this progress that the district, I'm sorry, is making concerning this decrease in suspension rate, but we're also using this information to continue to identify improvement opportunities in this area. Many of these items that you see on these slides are things that we have shared with you previously, but I do want to highlight one thing that we are going to be adding for this next semester. I want to highlight the use of structured day interventions at the secondary level. So, this is being used in place of out-of-school suspensions for students that have first-time offenses. Students will, instead of being sent home on a suspension, they'll actually stay at school, be moved into another classroom space with a credentialed teacher. They'll have support services if needed, so for special education, or their EL support services. They'll also be receiving social emotional support, and then while they're in that structured day intervention, they'll be receiving or participating in restorative interventions. So, we're happy to move this into place this year. I'm sorry, this next semester. Okay, so these, this is just a review, these are our district three-year goals, and so I just want to go through just quickly and just provide you a little bit of a mid-year update on these goals. So, let's start off with our graduation rate. So our three-year goal is that by June of 2025, that our graduation rate will be at 92%. Our current grad numbers are 79%, but this is an increase from last December of 2022 of 6%. So again, we're actually showing, we are showing progress. Winter school, as I mentioned, did allow our seniors to capture 185 credits, and that we do have targeted support and then one-to-one monitoring in place for our students, that is continuing. Our three-year goal for reclassification rate is to have 20% of our English learners reclassified. Right now, we have 6% reclassification rates as of that November window. This is a slight drop in the reclassification rates from last year, but we did have a bubble of students last year that we reclassified, they were students that we did not capture during that time period of distance learning, and so that gave us a little bit of a bump. We have eye-ready assessments that were administered in December, they're being analyzed to identify what students need to do in order to meet that reclassification criteria, and that we're still, you know, really pressing on instruction, increasing that level of accountability, and making sure that we have designated supports in place. And we will have a multilingual celebration this spring to celebrate those students that are reclassified. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. Okay, for English Language Arts, our three-year goal is to have 54% of our students meeting or exceeding grade level standards. Our projection right now, if nothing changes, is that we are showing a 2% decline. Before winter break, I went in and analyzed the information, sent information out to each one of our site principals with the number of students that needed to move. I know that they are focused right now on identifying what they need to do at the school site in order to improve this, increase this progress. We know that having professional development time for English Language Arts is a challenge. Most, the majority of our professional learning time right now is dedicated to math with CGI and DMTI, and so finding time to work with our teachers on English Language Arts is a challenge for us, it's one of the things that we're facing and looking to overcome. Our PLC teams at the school sites have each created penciled-out plans for how they're going to really intensely work with students this semester as we get ready in preparation for state testing. For math progress, our three-year goal is to have 40% of our students that are meeting and exceeding standards on the state assessment in the springtime. Right now, our mid-year projections are that we are looking at about a 3% gain from last year if nothing else changes. We have, as I mentioned, we have certain grade levels that are involved in training for math through CGI and DMTI. That training model is taking time, longer than we had hoped for, but we are evaluating that progress right now for those classes, for those grade levels that are involved in that training, and just making sure that we're on the right course, and if not, we'll be making a change, you know, for the next school year. Oh, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. And then lastly, we have our attendance progress. Our current ADA is at 93.8%, we're up 1.5% from where we were last year. Our sites are continuing to educate their families, TK, K&amp;One, about how important attendance is. We're studying alternative attendance options, really looking at what else we can do in order to really build upon that 1.5% improvement that we have at this point in time, but we do know that all subgroups have improved their attendance rates. Okay, what's next? So, coming up, we have our coaches forum in January. Principals attend meetings in small group with district staff, they report on their progress towards their academic and school connectedness goals. They discuss what's working at their sites, based on evidence, based on data. They discuss what adaptations they're making for this next semester, and then kind of what those next steps look like. District administration, like I said, participate in these meetings, there's also their fellow principals that are in the room, we have some hard conversations, we do a lot of reflection, it's really a group time to really sit and discuss what's going on at the school sites. We also have two board work sessions that are scheduled in the next few months. In April, we will be connecting with you to gather your input as we develop the new LPAC for this year, and then in August, we'll have a work session around school data. And then as mentioned, those school visits are continuing this semester, but really with an increased intensity. Our area administrators conduct school visits, they meet with principals on a monthly basis to talk about data, to talk about progress, but district admin now are really joining in as well. Keddie did, superintendent Davis did several school visits last semester, I'm joining in, I know that superintendent, assistant superintendent Collegian will be joining in. I may also intend to have some of our directors going out as well, to really look at what's going on in classrooms, what's working, and what course of action, what do we need to do differently to really make sure that our students are continuing to make progress? And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Boatwright. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustees Sellers?
Thank you, Dr. Boatwright. In regards to the graduation rates on slide 13, when, what time of the year do our staff meet with the seniors to develop the support plans?
They meet with them during that first semester.
Okay. Second question is, in regards to the staff members assigned to every credit deficient senior, which faculty or staff members are those?
We have our intervention counselors, we have our administrators, we have academic counselors that are assigned to those students.
Okay. And then- And then the, uh, last question I've got, I don't know if this is data that we track, but of our graduating seniors, how many of them are college-bound?
We do have that information, we do track that. Um, I can share that with you in a Friday report, I can provide that for you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one last question. Uh, apologize. Uh, can you provide more, uh, information real quick on what, uh, edgenuity is?
So edgenuity, it's an online, um, program, online courses. We have a number of students that are involved in edgenuity, or we, we say E twenty-twenty courses, um, for credit retrieval. So they'll be in there during an academic prep.
So that's for, uh, credit recovery?
It is for credit recovery, yes it is.
Is there a, any kind of guidance in that, or is it self, self-taught?
No, there's, there is a teacher that's there with the students. Um, they do monitor and, and provide support for those students. Um, so yes, so they are with someone, there, there is, uh, it's not like the students are just, you know, in a, in a space on their own. Um, but they do also have opportunity to work on those courses outside of the school day, which gives them a chance to, um, have even, you know, greater success in, in recovering credits. During, um, the winter session that we just held, we did have a number of students that were working through edgenuity as well, um, to work on recovering those credits. And that's something we also offer during the summertime, during spring break. They have an opportunity, opportunity to continue those, that work.
Thank you.
No other questions at this time? Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you.
Next for information item, uh, we move on to yeah, the item number three, to receive information on our quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure, Dr. Boatwright.
One second, please. I've got my papers all out of order now, so sorry about that. Do you have it, do you have it up? Sorry, sorry about that, since I don't have the clicker, I closed my laptop.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, here you go, Tim.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we have the, um, Williams settlement. Um, so principals and departments compile information for the quarterly report. Um, deficiencies are reported in, uh, materials, um, teaching staff not being highly qualified, and then also our facilities being safe and clean. So administration is recommending that the board place this item on the January twenty-third, um, board agenda for a public hearing, and then to return for action.
Thank you. So we, we will return this, um, since we have to, uh, have, have the formal procedure, so we'll return for action, thank you. Uh, next, item number four, receive information regarding school accountability report cards, Mrs. Pennington.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. Um, the school accountability report card, also known as SARCS, are a requirement for schools to receive state and federal funding. Um, the purpose of the report card is to provide parents and community with important information about each school. Uh, we are still waiting for the California Department of Education to provide some of the information in several areas, such as the graduation rate by student group, chronic absenteeism by student group, and career technical education participation, just to name a few of the areas. Um, once the CDE provides the missing data, the SARCS will be uploaded and reposted. Uh, we are legally bound to post SARCS for, by February first. Um, and so we are bringing this forward tonight for information. The administration is recommending approval for this item and for it to be placed on the January twenty-third Agenda for Action. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? None at this time, so thank you, we'll return this for action. We move on to item number four, receive information regarding change order number one for construction materials testing and inspection services for the aquatics project twenty-two, twenty-three, one oh four at Justin Garza High School, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, uh, Board President and Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. Uh, for your information tonight, uh, the district has received a proposal to extend the, uh, materials testing and laboratory services that is required by the California Building Code. If the board recalls, Salem Engineering was retained, uh, by the district to provide special inspection and laboratory, uh, testing services for the Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex. In that regard, our multiple prime contracts, uh, allows the district to recoup these costs for activities that are outside the scope of this initial proposal. Administration is recommending, uh, that this item be placed on the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four board agenda for approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board? None at this time? Thank you, so we'll, we'll return this for, uh, for consent. Uh, next item, item number six, receive information on Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex change orders for bid packages two, three, five, six, nine, and thirteen, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you again, uh, Board President and, uh, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis, for your information tonight, our change orders, and the attachment summary for each item for those multiple prime contractor, contractor packages on the Justin Garza High School Aquatics Project for your review. The change orders are changes for work that not included in the original contract scope of work. If you look closely at the packet, uh, you'll notice that most of these changes are due to errors and omissions by the architect. Uh, I have formally notified the, the architect that we, we will intend to, uh, recoup these costs. Uh, staff has reviewed and recommends approval of this item, uh, to return for action on the January twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty-four board agenda for, for approval. Uh, I'll, and if you have any questions, I'll stand by to answer any of them.
Trustee Korea?
So just to clarify, we're going to be asking the architect to pay for these additional change orders, correct?
You are correct, for the owners and, uh, the errors and omissions.
Um, if there's consensus from the board, I'd like, at least as an information item, that an item come back to notify the board that we've been able to recover when that occurs. I know that there's going to be some time before that happens,
Yes.
um, but just so that we can keep track and notify the community as well of that action. Thank you.
I can do that.
Trustee Cervantes? Trustee Solis?
Just confirming that both five and six will be a conversation in the true-up with, uh, the builders, true-up meeting, or...
Five and six?
The one previous to six.
The last two, yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Then, uh, we'll make sure that the item returns and we can put this on the consent agenda. Thank, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Uh-huh, you're welcome, thank you.
Next we turn to advanced planning.
The calendar is attached, although, uh, from earlier discussion, I'll need to change and look at dates for a facility work session, so I will do that next, and then otherwise, it is accurate.
Trustee Korea?
Um, when appropriate, can we update the advanced planning calendar to include the discussion about the Spanish pathways? And just a better understanding as to the, the one year of credit given for two years taken? Thanks.
Any other additional information or closing comments? Then our next meeting will be held, uh, here at Tuesday, January twenty-third, in two weeks at six PM for closed session, and of course, seven PM for our public session, uh, here at the district office in room four. And, um, with that, we will, uh, adjourn to closed session. Thank you for joining us this evening.